Here.
Mr. Sedman, here.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Ho.
Here.
Ms. Swakis.
Present.
Mr. McGinnity?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Present.
Okay, in regards to the agenda that was posted. Number three, a resolution to obey a portion of delinquent Luzerne County taxes for property located at 6169 Woodbury Street, Hanover Township. The school district has not met and voted on that. So traditionally it's been that the county waits until the other municipality and the school district vote. So we will be removing that from the agenda until we receive word from the school district in regards to their vote. Number six, we moved up to the voting meeting. So that is also eliminated from our agenda. Okay? We have a motion to adopt the agenda with those two exceptions.
So move.
Absolutely.
Mr. Keller and Ms. Swakis, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard?
I don't want to stay till about midnight, so yeah.
You want to stay till midnight?
Yeah, it's good, good time.
I think it's still open till midnight, Mr. Irvin. We'll get you a cotto.
I'll volunteer to sit in food for him.
What, can I get a menu?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, we're moving down to Mr. Pedri. And he's, the first item is the division reports, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Council is our standard way of doing things. The first of every month is our division head reports for the previous month. You'll see a whole bunch of highlights from a little snapshot of what's going on in every division in the county and those things. But I want to go off script for one second and talk about something that's going on here in the county. April's National County Government Month. And we have some amazing events throughout all of April. But two things I want to specifically draw County Council's attention to. The first is our children's youth donations. In the past, the county has provided pajamas for our children most in need. In one year, the next year we provided diapers for those children, and the next year we provided socks. These are children that are taken out most times in the middle of the night and in place with foster families. I had a long talk with Deanna German yesterday, who's our deputy director at children and youth. And the stories that she tells about these children sometimes being taken out of police-type situations and being placed with foster families who do not know these children, who do not have the clothing for these children or anything along those lines, what that means to those specific children. In addition, sometimes these children are placed with family members, grandparents, aunts, uncles. And those individuals take the child in out of the goodness of their heart, but they don't have the clothing and the needs to support these individuals. There are checks that are provided to our foster families, but they are paid on the fifteenth of every month. So if that foster family gets a child and takes that child into their home, a child in need, on the sixteenth of that month, they must go a whole month on their own before that reimbursement comes from the state for their needs. So what we do in the county is we provide those services and we give those little pieces of comfort to our foster children in need. One thing that we stopped doing in years, about two years ago with children and youth, was that we stopped utilizing garbage bags for foster families. We utilize, through some generous donations from a bunch of 501(c)(3)'s as well as the business community, we now provide knapsacks, we now provide luggage to those individuals so that those foster kids don't see their, everything that they have in their life going into a garbage bag. And what does that mean to them? What does they see from there? And we've provided pajamas in the past, because these kids are needing these needed pajamas. We provided the diapers, we provided socks. And I asked children and youth this year, what do you need? What is it that we can get behind you and support you on? This year, we need toddler clothes. I'm a father of three young children. I think about my three young kids going out in the middle of the night with what they need. So what I'm asking for County Council to get out to your constituents, as well as members of the public, if you can please be generous and provide some new toddler-sized clothing for our kids, our children and youth, foster children. There are collection points in my office, in Human Services at Penn Place. If you email me, we'll find a way to come pick them up. If a government, if a company wants to have a donation drive, we'll even come and pick them up for you to see what we can possibly do. But this is our opportunity to give back and provide back to those children. I want to impress upon County Council to please reach out to your constituents and talk about this. We'd be happy to reach out to the community in order to do something from there. Please be as generous as possible in order to provide just that little bit of comfort for those kids in need. Second thing I want to talk about for County Government Month is our tours. We have, if the members of the public out there watching online or the members in this room have not gone on a tour of this courthouse yet, please take full advantage of two free tours that we are offering here in the month of April. On April 23rd, our very own Sean Ducer from the Courts, who is here tonight with the future leaders here, the Daisy Group. And, you know, Sean gives tours of the courthouse of his own free time and his own will. He does a phenomenal job. That's on April 23rd in the evening. And then on the other tour is on April 29th. That's Tony Brooks from the Luzerne County Historical Society, excuse me, Preservation Society, will be providing a tour of this county courthouse. I've gone on both tours personally. I learn something new every single time. It's a phenomenal building, a once-in-a-lifetime building. And if the members of the public, the members of council haven't gone on a tour by one of those two phenomenal tour guides, I would highly encourage you to do so. On the meeting on the 23rd, they're asking for reservations. Last year, we got over 100 people, and it was difficult kind of tour, so we're asking, we're going to cap that one at 50. But if you do have an opportunity to go on one of these tours, I'd highly recommend that you take those tours and see the People's Building.
Times again.
On April 23rd and April 29th, I believe that's 6:00 PM. I will confirm that.
Thank you. You're going to be busy on the 23rd, though, at 6:00 PM.
Okay, so be here on the 29th.
Tour.
So 29th. We're going to be part of the exhibit for the tour, Mr. McGinnity. People want to be a part of it. So with that being said, regarding my pitch regarding what we're doing for April's County Government Month, the events are on our website. I emailed them to everybody. We're doing a great fundraiser for the SPCA on Thursday as well for the county government. We started with our child abuse awareness last week. So if there are anything else you guys want to discuss regarding the division reports, I will be happy to take those questions now.
David, where are the bins again for the toddler clothing?
So they're outside the county manager's, right in this building outside of my office.
Right.
They're at Penn Place.
Right.
There's one over in the annex building. Is that, Joan, there's one in the annex building, am I correct, right? Right? There's one in the annex building where the Quarter of Deeds is. Human Services Building also has a bin. But, you know, if...
You can't get into one?
You can get in the front door from the 111, from where you're at. And if there are, you know, like I said, we'll be happy to pick them up if we need to from there in order to provide those services. I'll tell you what, we got so many socks last year, it was great. And the best thing I hear from children and youth caseworkers is, you know, we used them. And we're going to keep using them, so.
We can bring them the next county meeting, right? Council meeting?
Well, because of them the whole month of April.
Okay.
Because of them the whole month of April, anytime from here.
Mr. Pedri, is there with the drive? I'm just thinking out loud. I know the students in Pittston area, the school district I'm involved with, they're some of the most charitable kids and families. Is there, do you have like information, specific, printout, handout of things that they're looking for? Because just thinking out loud, in the middle school that I'm at, there's 1,100 students there, and we have service clubs. And that could be a specific, the month of April is going to be, the fifth graders are going to bring in socks, the sixth graders are going to bring in and have kind of like a drive to aid the children and youth.
Yeah.
So is that something we could coordinate? Because that would go over big. And I will say, we have a very structured dress code at Pittston area, and our kids look for any reason to dress down.
Right.
So all we have to say is, you know, we'll do this as part of a dress-down day and a celebration, and our kids just go nuts. So if that could be coordinated, that'd be something I'd like to even wave with the entire school district.
What I'll do, Mr. Bilbo, is I'll reach out to children and youth. We have those documentations. We have, I can give you flyers, but I can also give you caseworkers to come actually talk to the kids, to tell them what it actually means, where it's going to go to. And I'll be happy to coordinate that. Thank you for offering.
I would like to do that, and I would like to have maybe even assemblies with our student body.
Oh, great.
To let them know how many other kids are out there that aren't as fortunate as they are, and what we could do to try to help those kids in that spot. So if we could coordinate that, that'd be something I'd like to move forward with.
I'd be happy to do that. It's wonderful. Thank you very much for the offer.
Division reports, Mr. Haas?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Pedri, two questions, page 16 out of 64 of the agenda. County Road, lucky number 13, Chase Road.
All right.
You know I was going to ask.
Of course.
You know I was going to. Drainage work to begin in May 2019, how are we on target for that?
We're right on target. My Penn dot love is what I call them, and I say, please, 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 get me Chase Road moving.
Yeah.
May 19th is the drainage work and road reconstruction will be June 19th. We have the, it's assigned to American Asphalt. It's been bid. American Asphalt, who's actually on Chase Road, is the low bidder. So we're all ready to go on all items from there.
And this is going to be a full milling, a full real paving? We're looking for the...
It's looking for a full reconstruction.
Yeah.
So it's all the way down to dirt and all the way back up.
And thank you, thank, and thanks to Mr. O'Neil and the guys too for that.
That's been a long road, Harry.
Yeah.
Literally, figuratively.
Literally.
Thanks.
The last one, congratulations to our new coroner. I saw that in the paper. I think you actually sent it out to us too, Mr. Pedri.
Sure.
How are we doing on the new deputy coroner? Are we going to fill that position?
He's posting the position.
He's posting, okay.
So he's posted the deputy coroner position. Has to be posted for two weeks.
Good.
I think he posted it, I want to say late last week.
On the paper, on the online...
Yeah, it's online right now. We encourage, we encourage may be as we can to look for. Mr. Hughes has done some really good things already. One of the items that he's looking to do is open up the deputy coroner independent contractor spots. We haven't, we haven't done a specific RMP for those positions in a lot of years. So I think just for transparency purposes, we're going to open that up to anybody in the county who wants to be a deputy coroner for an independent contractor-type position.
We like that.
There's only a certain number of people who want to do those things, but I think everybody should have an opportunity to bid.
Awesome. All right, thanks again.
Notice I haven't said anything about Blytheburn Road in Rice Township and Bridge Road in Hollenbach, and that's because it's just so exciting to get parked nearby, get out of the car and just watch the construction going on. I think they're doing an excellent job. And, you know, I'm trying to tell everybody who's very anxious about those bridges that they're actually under construction. So thank you very much.
Well, it's a matter of, it's really, it's Penn dot, it's Mr. Mitchell, it's Larry Plesh from our engineering department. Getting those items together, I would say that over 128 miles of road and 300 bridges is an incredible undertaking with the amount of funding we get from Penn dot. As I sit on the NPO board, we are constantly looking for other ways to divert as much funding as we possibly can. Big projects in 2019 is going to be the Chase Road and then the Foothills Drive going from Butler Township all the way through to Sugarloaf, because those three municipalities are going to take over those roads. And that will be seven less roads the county has to take care of moving forward. Those municipalities get the liquid fuels money. I'm hoping other municipalities take note of the work that gets done there.
And I also noticed the hot patch that's starting to happen. Thank you very much. It's looking very good, and people are even telling me to say thank you. So, thank you from the people who drive those roads. Thank you.
Any other questions? Number two, Mr. Pedri?
Counsel, I'm bringing to your attention, it's a contract for your review. This would be a contract over the $25,000 allocated in a year without a budget. So by charter, this is County Council's decision as to whether or not you would want to move forward with it. In my time as county manager, I've often stated that we are currently in Act Two of the Luzerne County Government, okay? The Luzerne County Home Rule Government. Act One was getting our house in order, fixing the crises, getting our debt service under control, getting the finances under control, doing all of those matters, you know, consolidating all of those row offices into one corporation-type of entity. And we are now moving forward in that stead. The second step is where are we going? What's Act Two going to look like, hopefully to a resolution, of a good resolution in Act Three, whoever the county manager may be for Act Three. I'm thinking Act Two's going to be a pretty long one. So, but, you know, what we're looking at with regard to this contract is a lobbying contract for Maverick Strategies. The county currently has over $750,000 worth of grants outgoing to the state agencies. We have over, our firefighters are also under the, are also seeking grants for over $2 million for our 911 project. And I reference the 911 project because we have sat in this room numerous times, and I've talked about the 911 project, and I said, I'm going to look under every rock, and I'm going to try every knock on every door I possibly can get to get as much funding as I can for this project. So then when I come to County Council in September and I say, this is the amount of money that I need in order to fully change our 911 system to an analog, to a digital system, I can say that we did everything we possibly could before County Council has to make some tough decisions. To that stead, I decided to put a contract before you with a company, they have a name of Maverick Strategies. What I have found is having a clear, precise, and consistent presence in Harrisburg is required in order for us to be competitive on these grants, in order for us to be competitive on state funding and on federal funding. I did the research. There are, here's a list of some of the counties or cities that have used or are using lobbyists at this point. Allegheny County, Westmoreland County, Beaver County, Dauphin County, Delaware County, Erie County, Green County, Lycoming County, Montgomery County, Somerset County, Tioga County, Warren County. City of Philadelphia has two lobbyists, City of Pittsburgh, the City of Harrisburg, the City of Allentown. All of those locations have lobbyists. So this isn't a new idea. And the reason why I'm bringing this to County Council is because we haven't done this in the past. Let me tell you about one specific instance that I just had. And I say it as a way of trying to show why we need a lobbying firm, in my opinion, in order to move the county forward. The council, as you are well aware, put in for an over $1 million grant for an LSA funding grant from the Redevelopment Authority. That was to build two towers in 911. That was the, public safety, what we need, would alleviate the taxpayers of over a million dollars that we wouldn't have to potentially borrow come September. It would take off that number. We put in for a grant. I got the letters from the state legislatures. Our grant writer wrote the grants. I called the state legislatures. They fully supported the grant. They worked on it with me. I called the state legislators again. They agreed. They're going to work with us on it. I knocked on their doors in Harrisburg. They agree we're going to work everything on it. I talked to the governor's office on our LSA money. Now, I've spent personally hours and hours and hours trying to make sure that we had that million dollars for those, for that grant. We received a grant in the amount of $330,000. Now, I'm not in any way, shape, or form saying that that's difficult. That's an amazing amount of money that we're able to get from that LSA funding, from the gambling money on that, that we are lucky to have that. That is money that will go directly to a tower located in the southwest section of our county that will provide radio coverage and safety for our citizens. So we are very, very grateful. But what I saw, what I had to do, what County Council would have to do, what the legislative committee has to do in order to fully advocate for each of these grants. I work with CCAP, and I know that Ms. Sedman and Mr. Haas, as working with the legislative authorities as well. There are consistent county issues that come up at the state. A lobbyist group would assist the county in moving this, moving the county forward in order to make sure that we have a voice at all times with our state legislators, with our government. I don't need to say the words unfunded mandate in this room, as they've been said hundreds, if not thousands of times, okay? And they just keep getting pressed upon us time and time again. If we have a voice, if we have a consistent voice, those unfunded mandates hopefully won't occur, or won't occur as often as we possibly can. Maverick Strategies, I met with, I had preliminary discussions with a few different groups. I had serious discussions with proposals from two groups. Maverick Strategies was the one that I decided to go with. They were the low bidder in this location. I've asked Maverick Strategies to be present at the voting session on April 23rd for your review, for any questions that they may have. They are currently at the City of Harrisburg's meeting tonight, where they are their, City of Harrisburg's lobbyists, as City of Harrisburg is removing themselves from Act 47 status. The amount in question is $5,000 a month. We have the funding for the $40,000 in the 2019 budget in operations in order to handle this. The question is the amount of money in 2020, the $5,000 per month, if County Council would allow it. I would recommend that County Council does allow this. I think it gives us a clear and coherent voice in Harrisburg. It gives us an opportunity to do everything we possibly can. If these individuals are able to sustain for us one grant over that amount of money that I believe it pays for itself. Mr. Troy asked for, what's the return on investment? The return on investment is their work. If they're able to provide us with one grant over that $40,000, I believe it's money well spent to where we want to be. In addition, ladies and gentlemen, I can't stress enough, the 911 project ongoing. We have all these different grants out there right now. We have those federal firefighter grants out there right now. I believe we need their assistance to get us over the line. This is something different in Luzerne County. We haven't had lobbyists in Luzerne County, and I understand that. But it's my job as county manager to bring to you the next step, the progressive step. It's up to County Council what you want to do with it from here. But I'll be happy to take your questions, and Maverick Strategies will be present at next county council meeting if there are any.
Segman.
David, have you actually seen the successes of some of these county lobbyists? Like what has been, what have been some of their successes in counties not like Pittsburgh or Philadelphia County, but more on the line with Warren or certain counties that are...
We're not in line with Warren, no kidding. But here's what I would say. Dauphin County has a lobbyist, and I want you to look at the last couple of years of Dauphin County's grants received from the state. Now, I'm not saying that's a one-to-one action or anything along those lines, but Dauphin County does receive a large amount of grants from the state. In addition, if you read the law regarding LSAs and how Dauphin County is able to get LSA funding through, Dauphin County is able to get LSA funding directly from the state. It doesn't go to the state legislators split up. It actually all goes to the county in order to split up. I believe that those, that's an instance that occurs. In addition, look at some of these other names on the list. Obviously Montgomery County, Allegheny County, you know, those issues are time and time again moving forward. Maverick Strategies, the one that will be, that I'm recommending to County Council, is currently working with the City of Harrisburg that is coming out of Act 47 status. They received a large state grant that Maverick Strategies was able to obtain for them right towards the end of 2018. They'll be happy to discuss that with you next week, next meeting when they come down. I believe it's an opportunity.
Are there a lot of counties that are also looking at this for 911 money?
Well, we're one of the only ones for 911, because we're one of the only ones who're doing a whole project right now for 911. At CCAP, this is one of the things that many of us talk about. Voting machines was the big one at the last meeting. And I started talking to a bunch of different counties about lobbyists. Some of them swear by them, that already have them. Some of them are new to it, some of them are interested. But I believe I want to put it in front of council to have your thoughts on it.
Other questions, comments from Mr. Pedri?
My thought is, we already have CCAP. CCAP is supposed to come up with the priorities for funding and work with the legislature, and we have county council members and maybe the managers involved with CCAP that are on committees, and maybe if they're not getting the funding, maybe you need to talk to Doug Hill down there and ask him to reformulate some different committees to bring funding in. I mean, I know they're always working on the Human Services side, but I'm not supportive of hiring a lobbying firm. What are you going to do, take these state reps out to dinner? And, I mean, come on, that's what lobbyists do. What are you going to do, give them some campaign contributions to do their job? I mean, I hope our state reps and our state senators are working for the people of this county and not for people who give them campaign donations and provide them with a free lunch. I mean, it's their job to work for the people of this county. And, I don't know, if they're not doing it, then we need to let them know that they're not doing it. We need to be more vocal with the press that our legislators aren't doing the job that they're supposed to be doing, and they're not helping us bring in the money that we're supposed to be. I mean, if I have to bring money into Luzerne County or I've got to buy TVs from Mohican Sun, what's more important? Is it funding for a tower for emergency services, or is it for TVs for Mohican Sun? I mean, that's what we have to start weighing. What kind of money are these state reps walking around and giving out, and what kind of money are they passing us up on? I mean, we need to start holding our elected officials more accountable. I mean, you drive through the roads of this county, I mean, up on 115, it was just full of potholes, yet we got Mike Harrell in this county, who's the minority chair of the Transportation Committee. There shouldn't be a pothole in this county. This county should be paid with gold. You should be able to reach out to Mike and say, Mike, you know, we need some more money, you know, out of Harrisburg, you're the Democratic Chair of the Committee. Help us out. I don't think we're doing that, though. Then we ought to pay somebody, but work for John Udecheck to come out here and take him out to dinner. That don't make any sense to me.
Anyone else? Ms. Haas?
Well, I have a question first, and actually it was Mr. Troy asked the question, and it was a good one. How did you come up with this company? Did you put out an RFP?
I did not. It's professional services, so there's no need for an RFP for that matter. But I did reach out to, I Googled Harrisburg lobbyist. I reached out to people who work in Harrisburg, were the lobbyist firms I should speak to. I spoke to a couple of them. I had serious proposals from two, and Maverick Strategies was the low bidder.
Don't we generally put out RFPs, though? Don't we generally do that if we're, I mean, I know we do it for auditors, we do it for other professional services. I mean, I'm just asking, don't we usually put out an RFP?
In some instances, we do, and some instances, we do not.
Okay. I'm not really aware of another instance where we didn't, but, you know, on the other hand, maybe you could tell me, give me another example of one that we didn't.
For professional services?
Mm-hmm.
Auditor for our $5.3 million, reached out to Baker Tilly. That was last, that was a couple of weeks ago, attorneys, where they're needed from where we're at, realtors, where needed for our real estate. I mean, that's just off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, that's fine, that answers that question. I do agree with Mr. Irvin. I mean, I was thinking about this, I read about it in the paper, and, you know, you talk about having someone on a daily basis, day-to-day, on the ground with face-to-face contact. And the first thing I thought is, you know, who's there every day with face-to-face contact? They are our elected representatives. And, I mean, there was a time when we had long-term representatives in Harrisburg when I know that the county could call them and say, you know, I need some, I need help. If you think back about Dan Flood and, you know, people like that who were in Harrisburg every day, they were dealing with their colleagues every day. I mean, I think that's where we start. I don't know that we need to add an additional expense. I've talked in the past about other things that we add additional expenses to that I don't think are necessary, but I don't think paying someone to be the face of our county can really compete with us and our elected representatives being the face of our county. I know when Mr. Pedri had talked one time about having a public relations position and having a deputy manager and things like that, and I remember Mr. Keller saying, you know who the best PR person for this county is? Mr. Pedri is. Because Mr. Pedri is a very personable person.
I agree.
I do. And when you were talking, when you, when you took your 10, 15 minutes to give the wind-up to this, I wasn't sure whether it was your opening argument or your closing argument, but I think you do.
I'm still working it out.
You make a very good case for Luzerne County yourself, and I know it takes a lot of time, but it's something worthwhile, and I think you have connections with, with our legislators, and you have the ability to pick up the phone and make those, make those calls and say to them, "You know, you're in Harrisburg, and that's what your job is there. Your job is to represent Luzerne County and help us get what we need." I'm not really in favor of paying somebody $60,000 a year to do what I think we should be getting anyway, so.
Anyone else?
If you pay someone money and the amount of money that them yields more money than we, that we had before, and the more money that we had before is more than 60,000, then it might be definitely worthwhile.
But if you don't pay them and you get that money, you, you're in $60,000 more.
If is but a little word with just two letters in it, it's a kipling, and those ifs are not necessarily apples and apples.
I know, but you used if first, so, okay.
Anyone else?
Yes. I'd like to see some history before we keep going in on this, and as Ms. Segman would say, not, not from areas of the Philadelphia area or Pittsburgh area, because we all know that's where the money goes. That's why we're short-changed all the time. I want you to get counties that have these people in place, and I want what they did the year before and then after they hired somebody, what the, what the final numbers were.
That's fair.
If, if it's actually worth going forward on this or not, but not the Pittsburgh or Philly areas because that's where all the money goes. They're really not doing anything, the lobbyists, because, I mean, everybody in Pennsylvania knows where, that's where the money goes.
I would say this. I, I mean, you know, this, this decision to move forward with a lobbying firm, no way she performed was, is, is to be done as a disparaging comment to the Luzerne County delegation, both Republicans and Democrats in the state and the House. We do have a good relationship with all those individuals. Those individuals got us this $330,000 for this LSA funding. Let's be honest as to what, to what occurred here. Mike, you know, Mr. Urban brought up Mike Carroll. We were having an issue with PennDOT recently. I spoke to Mike Carroll, and it was resolved the next day. You know, so we do have individuals that stand up for us in Harrisburg. This is the next step, and this is a decision that county council should make.
And I just have, have a question, Lyndon. So both, you know, both of us coming from PSCA, you know, we have lobbyists, and sometimes they can be very helpful. They, I mean, haven't you found that the case more than sometimes our legislators, first of all, some of our legislators and the things we need, they're just not going along with it because there's either a minority party or something like that in terms of, you know, how, who's in power. So sometimes we need someone else there, I think. But haven't you found lobbyists in our, in our former, or your current profession, my former profession, helpful?
Well, and I did think about that, too, and, you know, I, I mean, I was thinking about how people use lobbyists in general, and I think that there are organizations and maybe corporations that might find a value in having a lobbyist. We're not a corporation. We are elected to represent the people of our county, just as our state legislators are elected to represent those very same people, and that, to me, is a critical difference. We're not a special interest group. We're an interest, we're, we're a group that has, that represents all the interests of this county.
Yes.
And I think that's the difference. You're not legislating, you're not, not lobbying for a particular piece of legislation. You're not lobbying for the tobacco industry or for, for pharmaceuticals or whatever. We're, we're looking for things that are going to benefit our county residents, and not in, in super-specific ways all the time, but sometimes, as in the case of the 911 tower, it is going to be, you know, a specific thing that we might need some help with. But the difference is that we're elected to represent people. We're not being paid. We don't have a focus on one particular vocation. We don't have a, a focus on one particular product or, or it's, it's not a for-profit situation. I think that's the difference.
I would like to find out from our legislators how effective they think lobbyists are. I think some of the lobbyists deal with them and can sometimes put a strong face in conjunction with our legislator, put something forward, work through something. So, I mean, I'm just looking at it as another tool in the bucket, another tool to help us get some of the money we deserve, get some of the projects done that we deserve, some of the help we need. And I'm going to talk to, give a call to some of our legislators to see if they have working relationships with this lobbyist, if they think the lobbyists are in fact, no, you know, they're kind of usurping their positions. That's what I'm going to think of it.
Anyone else? Yes?
Well, since somebody else is speaking, I, I would just say it's another tool in the bucket. I mean, I, I understand that, but I think it's a pretty expensive set of pliers, you know? And, and I'm not sure that that's, that's worth it. I'm not saying it's not, but, you know, we don't have unlimited funds in this county.
I know.
You know, and, and I do think we need to spend our money wisely, but, and I think we need to use the tools that are already in that bucket, namely the people that are also elected to represent the citizens and the residents of this county.
What kind of guy we hired to represent the county?
Anyone else?
Yes, one, one comment.
Go ahead.
This, somebody took a shot at Mr. Carroll, but...
Not a shot, it's a reality.
No, I just want to say, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Poschinsky, Senator Udichek, again, I mean, we're like the black child here or whatever you want to call it, the money goes there. They have an uphill battle, but they go, they go to the table every day and fight for the people that go with the lunchkin.
I hope so.
And people realize that in Luzerne County, and that's why when they run, there, there's nobody against them. Every day, they're the voice of labor, and you're a voice, you're in labor now for the last couple of years. I mean, that's who, that's who they go to the table, to Harrisburg and battle for every day, the normal person that goes with a lunchkin. And thank God we have people like that.
Let me, let me just repeat something that, that the new governor of, of Michigan said prior to getting elected, "Just fix the damn roads. Just fix the damn roads." That's it. That's all I asked Mike Carroll, to fix the damn roads. You're the chairman of the legislative committee. If you think that's a shot, it's not a shot. It's a request. Fix the damn roads. The highest gas tax in the country, in this state, fix the roads.
Yes.
I'm going to say this again, Mr. Urban, you are on the legislative committee.
And Mike Carroll heard my voice.
And when did he hear it? Because as long as Harry and I've been meeting, you haven't been present.
That's right. Then I told you I wasn't going to until we start, and still we, and we, till we start getting something done. What did, what was the last thing I asked for? I asked the solicitor to do two things, right? Two things. And, and you're working on one, right?
I, I've taught you about the issues.
Right, exactly, you did. So you're working on that one, okay. That's how slow the train's moving. It's moving. It's moving, okay?
Mr. Urban...
You want, you want to bring Mike Carroll here again? I'll be glad to sit in here and tell him to his face to fix the damn roads. Mike's got a powerful position.
I think we understand that.
Yeah, exactly. That's all. It's not whether I go to the committee or not, it's that the roads are in terrible shape, and we've got the highest gas tax in the country, and the people of this county deserve better. When they blow a tire, they fix it out of, out of their own pocket. State reps that ride around state cars, when they blow a tire, they take it to Harrisburg or they have a local garage fix it, not at their expense, but at the government's expense.
I just think that you would be a help. When we go visit the legislators, your voice, as clear as it is, would be a help.
Well, he's going to continue to hear it.
Anyone else?
Question, Mr. Chair, too, about this, regarding this, this contract with Maverick. If they're going to pursue more grants, isn't that what our vendor, MCM, is doing too, Mr. Pedri, with regards to the, the 911 upgrade? So would this be overlap? Is it just a bigger scope?
MCM is still identifying grants. They do a lot, well, first off, MCM is, is a lot more than identifying grants. They are figuring out exactly what we need, how many radios we need. I mean, we're at the point right now where...
They're managing the whole project.
They're, they're running, they're, they're running down the whole project. Now, they have identified certain grants for us that we are seeking specifically those firefighter grants, which were successful out in Erie when they did their 911 project that we now have to reach out to our firefighters to support. The, the southern end of the county is pointing for a million-dollar grant from those firefighters. We're working with the back mound firefighter group as well to point in for another million-dollar grant. And those grants will be utilized for those radios, for those specific fire departments. That will alleviate the taxpayer in order to do those things. But that's what MCM is doing. They're identifying some of these things, but they're not specifically seeking out, listen, here's what's going on, hey, there's a line item here in the 2020 budget that you may have an opportunity to seek funding from, which is what I'm hoping.
So this Maverick, so the scope is like everything, any, any, any apples on the ground, that's what they're looking for, but the MCM is looking specifically for 911 upgrade and...
They're really doing two separate things. MCM is identifying the grant, but they're not contacting anybody. Maverick, absolutely. I hopefully will, will draw as much attention to 911 because that's what we need right now, but I think overall.
So you don't, do you, do you see them overlapping, though, with, if, if we go in that direction, if we look at Maverick, will they be doing the same essentially in this realm as what MCM's already doing?
No.
For that? So it is something different than they'll be looking at?
Correct.
And that's, that is exactly what then?
MCM is, MCM is specifically, I know you're, you're excited about MCM doing grants. MCM doesn't do a lot of grants. MCM is doing our entire project. MCM is figuring out, Dave, you need this many radios at this, at this location. Hanover Township needs this many radios. This is where you're at. You need this sort of analog. This ra, this radio tower is incorrect. You need a radio, you need a, that's what MCM is doing. Now, as part of their duties, they may also say, "Hey, in the past, we've gotten grants from the following locations. Why don't you go ahead and do those things?" And we're applying for grants, and like, we've always applied for grants. Whether or not council approves this contract or not, we're still going to apply for grants. I just approved a grant, we got a grant meeting application with NEPA Alliance meeting on Friday morning where we're seeking more funding for, for our roads out in Hanover to support those, those distribution centers out there in terms of busting. So we're always going to do grants. This company specifically seeks out funding for those grants.
Okay. So it is, so it is a different, a different...
It's a different skillset.
Okay. All right. Very good, thanks.
Anyone else? Well, on the 23rd, we'll have a representative for Maverick, so throw other questions. And Mr. Snee, hopefully, Mr. Pedri, could we get that information prior to the 23rd?
I will, I will try my best.
Please, that would be helpful. Moving down to number four, this is the voting system.
Is that going to be on the voting session on the 23rd?
It'll probably be on the voting session, but we can adjust if necessary.
Thank you.
Yep. We're moving down to number four, this is the voting systems, RFP. This is a, we've had a lot of discussion, and there's been a lot of notoriety in regards to the new voting machines. I asked Mr. Pedri to bring this to council. Obviously, the RFP and the process will all be in the executive branch, but this will offer an opportunity for the public at large and the council to have their comments so that when they move forward, hopefully, you know, everything will be considered and the, you know, the RFP will come back and have a, a good result. But it will be in the hands of the executive branch of government to complete the process. Mr. Pedri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council, we had talked about the election machine, election machines for some time. We have a state mandate in place to have election machines in place for the April 2020 election. We are, many counties are moving forward with election machines. Many counties have already purchased new election machines in order to comply with this mandate. This RFP that, that has been drafted by county administration clearly sets out the, the proposal process in order for those five companies that have been certified in Pennsylvania in order to provide those, and how to give those proposals. This RFP is the product of the executive branch, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, as Mr. McGinley said, for a couple of different reasons. The first would be so the public can see it ahead of time. If there are suggestions from the public, I'm very interested in taking them. If the council has any suggestions, also, I'm willing to, to listen to them as well. The, the executive branch may take those suggestions and integrate them, or they may not, or we may not. However, this decision will be county council's. There will be an opportunity, the county council will make the final determination on the RFP voting system. So just as a timeline, I would like this RFP to be on the street by next Monday, April the 15th, and then their proposals are due back on May 10th of 2019. The committee will review those proposals and make a recommendation to county council. I'm hoping let second, the second meeting in June, if not that meeting, then in July, will be the, will be the committee's recommendation to county council. County council can either accept that rec, accept that recommendation or move forward with your own decision, as you will as well, as well. When the county bought the current Ivotronic machines that we had, the committee in place recommended a different machine, and my understanding is the commissioners went a different way and, and picked a, a different machine from what the committee selected. So this is still your decision at all points. However, the committee that the administration has put in place is the following in order to prepare, review the proposals. David Parsnick, Luzerne County Director of Admin Services, Dave Skronski from the Luzerne County Next Generation 911 GIS Manager, Mary Beth Steininger, the Deputy Director of the Election Bureau, Mark Mikowski, Assistant Solicitor for the, the county, Justin Barons, who's the Chair of the Luzerne County Republican Committee, John Pekarowski, who's the Chair of the Luzerne County Democratic Committee, former councilman Rick Williams, who will be representing independent voters, Peter Aulet, who's a Democratic Representative on the Luzerne County Election Board, and Ann Davies, who's a Republican Member of the Luzerne County Election Board. That's a nine-member board that will be reviewing these processes. Our current Elections Director, Mercer Chris Spell, will not have any involvement in any way with the selection of the new machines. So with that being said, I'm open for suggestions regarding this thing. If you want to take a look at it when you get home and email me, or something along those lines, we'll move forward from there. And that also goes for members of the public as well.
Mr. Ross?
My, my issue in this process is not so much whether or not the, the council is the final decision-maker on this, but just the, the fact that the RFP process is initiated in the first place. Again, the history of this emanated from an agreement between the Jill Stein campaign and the governor's office. Again, this council voted down a million dollars to put towards new machines. We are ending their near, they're ending their near of life, but again, this is a, in reaction to a mandate that is unfunded. Mr. Pedri was talking about that before. We've seen that a million times around here. So, again, it's almost like the same thing with the Hazelen thing. Here we are, we're going to, we're going to go, and we're going to spend millions of dollars on something that is being initiated by somebody else for another agenda, and it's not being paid for. So I'm looking at this, Mr. Manager, did, did any of this come from the initial situation? We find ourselves in that, that the machines that came from the AVA Act many years ago, that they are nearing their end of life? Or does this stem totally from the governor's office, basically, this whole process?
This, this process came from the governor's office. I do agree that our, our machines are nearing the end of, end of their lives. I mean, this, they are now 14 years old at this, at this point, but they are still working, and they have worked. But the governor's office have made a mandate for the paper trail, for the, the paper trail systems, which we currently do not have.
Yes. And that agreement, this, this county had no standing in that, or at least we, we weren't party to that, that agreement. And again, I, I think better practice, better practice would have been if Luzerne County had to sit at the table to discuss stuff like this, because again, we're putting our taxpayers on the hook for an estimated $4 million, regardless of however, however many of the five currently certified vendors come forward with the machines, that's what we're looking at. And we have not budgeted that for this, for this year, I think for very appropriate reasons. And when I look at this, I don't, I don't want to, I feel like I'm having one of those kind of council meetings, I don't want to just poo-poo everything, but to me, this is like dead-on arrival because we don't have the money for this, and until the state and the feds come forward, what are we doing? We're buying machines that we don't essentially need this coming cycle, and we're putting our taxpayers on the hook. Yeah, I just have, it just, I just want to say for the record, because we keep on coming back to this, and it's, it's, it's just inherently unfair. Here we are again.
Anyone else?
Yeah. You know, we, we talk about end-of-life cycle of a machine. It's 14 years old, but, you know, it's only been used 28 times, two elections a year. Same thing with the old machines that, that, that we had in the county, the lever ones. I mean, yeah, they were old, they, they worked. Some of the numbers were off in the back and was hard to read, but, you know, you had to rely on the judge and somebody else to go back sometimes to check them, but the reality is they're only used twice a year for the most part. We don't have many special elections here, so, so for a machine that's used 28 times, I don't see how they're hitting the end of their life cycle. Really don't. We don't buy a computer, put it on our desk, and turn it on twice a year and then say, "I need another one." It's just, it's just not the case, so.
And I appreciate what the manager said, that the council, we can, we can discuss and take action, any step of this process. So, again, it's a request for proposals. It's not a guarantee of, of a sale here. So, I think we need to keep that in mind. I really value the folks you mentioned, Mr. Pedri, all the people on here, quality people. I think, I think we know just about all these folks, and um, that's really, they're putting their time and effort in. Again, I just wish the, the legislatures could, could help us out, from the Governor's Office all the way down, from the Congress all the way down. Let's take it a step higher.
The only thing I would request is, is if this process goes through and there's meetings interviewing the people or the vendors, that they would be open to at least council members and maybe the public, so they not to come in and question. I wanna come in and listen, so that when I, we get to the point if, if a decision's made, that we have enough information to make a decent decision.
I would agree. Um, also, let's talk about advocacy. Uh, in, in Harrisburg, uh, the, the federal authorities have only allocated three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Luzern County. Uh, for, I think, actually, three hundred and four thousand, I thought it was, uh, three, uh, three hu- approximately three hundred thousand dollars uh for, for the new voting machines. That's from, that's from HAVA. Um, uh, the, the Governor's Office has allocated seventy-five million dollars uh for the uh voting machines. Uh, but the Governor has asked for that to be paid off in fifteen million dollar hits um to the counties over the next five years. Uh, CCAP um and myself have been advocating against that. I think that if we're gonna have any monies, I think it needs to come in one year um in order to, uh, in order to fully understand as to how much money that we would actually get uh from that in order to help us make a decision. Obviously, the Governor will only be Governor for another three years, and I, hopefully, that fifteen million dollars won't be on a chopping block in some future budget five years from now. Um, but those are the only two amount of fundings that we've been able to uh obtain from this. CCAP is very vocal on this matter, uh, as well as, as we possibly, as we possibly can be. But those are the only two types of funding, uh, at this point. It doesn't look like, doesn't look like either one of those fundings will be able to fund an entire purchase of all new machines. It will have to come back to the county at some point. And this is gonna be a, another big decision that this county council has to make, whether or not you wanna enter into a contract, what contract you wanna enter, and what's the price gonna be, and how are we gonna pay for it if your county council wants to choose to do it.
Dave, is there any way that we could do, you know, ten percent, the, the federal government has allocated, and that, that's absolutely right. Could we get ten percent of machines on it? I'm, I'm just, as I say, it's probably not even best practice, but again, if we have a pay-as-you-go system, we can, we can phase in the machines. I could totally support that, but like you said, that seventy-five million dollars, that's a, that's like a pipe dream too. And it has to be legislatively approved. We know that's, I don't think, I don't think the initiative's there unfortunately.
I mean, and at this point, it's April, the budget is due June thirtieth. I'm hopeful, uh, that'll be, and I, but I appreciate...
The budget's been presented already by the government.
The budget's been presented. The budget's been presented, and hopefully, uh, we'll have a budget, a state budget by June thirtieth, and I'm hopeful, uh, that, that Governor Wolf's proposal will come through. I'm hoping the state will make a determination to do it all in one year, uh, as opposed to over, over five years. So, we'll make a full determination as to where we wanna be.
I mean, the, the average person out there, you know, they do home improvements, they pay as they go, as they have money in, in their budget. They do the repairs, they do the upgrades. Maybe if we could have government run in this case, maybe a little more that way, it might be more successful with voting machines, and even the nine-one-one upgrades too. But I know it's probably a little unorthodox, but might be much more manageable.
As you realize, well, uh, if we choose not to follow the mandate, there's a potential for our voting to be decertified, which means we would not have anyone's vote count. So, that's the risk you take with some of the steps you're uh might be indicating at this point. Obviously, I think last year when we did the budget, we should have been wise enough to allocate some monies uh for some of these purchases, but we didn't. So, we're dealing with it now. And it's a point in time where you have to decide whether you're gonna go with the mandate, or you're not gonna go with the mandate. And if you don't go with the mandate, then you risk the voting decertification.
U.S. Constitution gives the franchisement responsibility to the states, and the state constitution deals with that. All we have to do is, is, is follow their lead, and it is their responsibility to pay for it.
Well, I think it's the county's responsibility to have, to have the voting process. It's the county's responsibility. So, that's where we stand at this point. And it's not easy, but we have responsibilities that we have to meet.
We signed on for the, for the fund.
Mr. Pedri, are there other counties that are in the same situation with the voting machines?
They're all in the same situation.
So, how are the lobbyists working that?
Uh...
Have you heard about?
I've heard, well, everybody's, everybody's going after the same pot of money, uh, for the, for the, the states. There, there are no grants out there, uh, that, that this, that this would fit for, or anything along those lines, or believe me, everybody would, everybody would reach for it. Um, the biggest support right now is CCAP and all the lobbyists, and all the counties really are calling on their state legislators to support the Governor, Governor's Initiative for the seventy-five million dollars. We're actually asking for, not a seventy-five million dollar number, we're asking for half. So, uh, if we come up with a three-point-five million dollar purchase, they're gonna, let's do three-point-six, 'cause I don't wanna do the math. They'll come in at one-point-eight million dollars uh from the state. Uh, and then that would be three hundred thousand dollars extra from the feds. The county would have to come up with the, the rest of that, that, that money from there.
And have, and have our legislators been informed of this, and...
I've personally contacted every one of them. Uh, and they've, they've led, they've, um, uh, they've pledged their support as well to the county regarding this. I mean, this is a, a huge change in, in how we do elections, obviously. We will have paper verifiable machines, which are, are the recommended uh type of machine from the Department of State.
I have to say that each of our state delegation members are definitely informed. And, and I had an opportunity myself to, when Governor Wolf came to the MA building last month to speak with him directly in that regard. And, uh, you know, he promised that he would support measures to provide, uh, fifty percent was the number he talked about. I requested that he look at more than that. So, we have made our inroads as far as contacts, uh, but we still have a ways to go, so...
Timmy made a case for no lobbyists right there. Good job.
Well, I don't want to be in Harrisburg every day, Mr. Urban. I had an opportunity, 'cause Governor Wolf was here, and, and we were able to, uh, take advantage of that opportunity, so... Anyone else? Mr. Gavlick? Luzern County Transportation Authority is the local match for the state operating assistance. And we do have your letters that were provided.
Yes, and for those of you that don't know me, I'm Norm Gavlick. I'm not the Director of Hazleton Public Transit. Uh, Luzern County Transportation Authority, uh, we have here tonight two of our newest board members, Joe Patton and Mike Seflow, as well as John A. Lou, our Director of Finance. Um, as Mr. McGinley pointed out, I sent you our letter for our local match. And, uh, this, uh, as Ralph pointed out earlier, uh, we didn't receive any increases in our operating funds. Uh, we had, we did the last four years in a row, LCTA received increases. We did not, uh, no one in the state did this year. However, they did increase the county's match, as you noticed in the letters. Uh, and that's due to the fact that, uh, the county's matches are supposed to be fifteen percent, and they have a step-up provision they've been working for, um, a number of years, where the county match just goes up five percent each year automatically, 'cause they're at around ten percent number. So, it's stepping up to that over the course of time, so... So, the co- the, the, the match we're looking for is six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-four-hundred-and-nine dollars, which will enable us to get a six-million-fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars uh in PennDOT matching grant through the Act eighty-nine, Section fifteen thirteen, uh, annual operating grants. Uh, with that, rather, you know, we've had a lot of discussion earlier about that. I don't know if there's any questions currently about LCTA. Obviously, we serve the entire county. Um, I, I provided you a, um, document in the packet when I sent it over with some other data and information. Uh, you know, we have about a hundred and seventy employees. We have two union representation groups. Um, annual operating grant is a little bit, or annual operating budget, rather, is a little bit over fifteen million. Includes both shared ride and fixed route. Uh, services, we're currently located on North Hampton Street in Kingston. Uh, we have a lot of projects going on, a lot of progress and advances we've made over the last several years. Uh, if somebody watched the paper, the least of which is the fact that we're working, or not the least of which, is that we're working on the purchase of, uh, what's, uh, we all know as the Murray Complex over in Wilkes-Barre, which is approximately twelve-acre land site, uh, with the purpose of relocating LCTA and consolidating our operations from both forty-four, where our shared ride operations are, our Kingston operations, all onto one site in downtown Wilkes-Barre. Estimates are that we're looking at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a twenty-two to twenty-seven million dollar project to build what we consider to be a state-of-the-art transportation center of northeastern Pennsylvania in downtown Wilkes-Barre, uh, which, by the way, is geographically located pretty centrally between Scranton and Hazleton. Uh, so, that process, we are in the process of negotiating, uh, a sales price with the property owners. The property owners have been involved in the project, uh, from the beginning. They've been cooperative. They're willing sellers. Uh, uh, we did an appraisal on the properties. They also did an appraisal on the properties. Uh, not surprisingly, those numbers are not necessarily that close together. Uh, currently, PennDOT has that, both appraisals in Harrisburg, and they're doing a third review on both to reconcile the two, uh, and then come back with, uh, uh, what will be our next offer going back to the property owners. So, we're confident that, uh, over the coming weeks, a month or so, that, uh, we'll be able to come to terms and make an official announcement that after nearly four years of working on this project, uh, that we'll finally be able to, um, officially announce that, you know, we, uh, entered agreement to purchase the properties and move forward with, uh, the rest of the construction and building. One, uh, other note about that, I've spoken to, uh, Dave Pedri a few times about, uh, a proposal we've put out regarding the two magistrates offices that are in the building that are adjacent on the property, the Murray Complex there. Um, and, uh, Dave has, uh, relayed that to Mike Shikovsky. We're gonna be setting a meeting up. Uh, we proposed the possibility of moving those two magistrates offices into our new administration building that's literally gonna be down the sidewalk. And there are a lot of good reason that, uh, hopefully, we'll consider that. Uh, one is obviously with, um, and we, we can, if we do it in the beginning, uh, we can work it into the design of the building. Uh, they potentially can have, still have their own separate spaces on the first floor. Uh, they would be in a, uh, a bus terminal, basically, where all the bus routes are gonna be coming in, so there'd be easy access for the public to get in and out and to and from all of the, um, uh, proceedings there. Uh, I believe it would also save the county, um, potentially a significant amount of money, 'cause obviously, being a county entity, we're not necessarily looking to make a big profit off of you guys, 'cause you are there helping us out. So, I think the county can save a lot of money in the process. Uh, and the money, by the way, that you would pay us in rent, which would help offset expenses, is going back into another county entity, which then in turn is supporting public transit. So, the money's gonna stay in the county, supporting, uh, county residents, and others who'll be using public transit. The money for the funding of that project primarily is, uh, is all being, the purchase of the property is coming also from primarily a PennDOT grant, which is gonna cover about one, well, uh, depends on the sale price, but they're gonna cover the bulk of it. We also have a federal transadministration grant for a portion of it. And at this point, uh, it, it, um, I'm told, and I'm verbally convinced, I met with the city of Wilkes-Barre. The city of Wilkes-Barre, at this point, will be providing us the local match we need for the PennDOT grant to purchase the parcels at Murray, at the Murray Complex. That could amount anywhere from forty to eighty or ninety thousand dollars, based on what the sale price ends up being. So, uh, we've submitted a, uh, resolution to the city, and, uh, we expect to be on a work session, uh, in the next coming weeks. And that we're going to set that up as a, um, an amount not to exceed. Uh, so, we've been working with the mayor and council there. So, uh, that, they're participating, and they're gonna be supplying, as it is a very good project for downtown. In addition to that, they also plan on conveying to us a section of Ross Street that runs into the property. Uh, if you remember, at the Murray Complex, for those of you who may have gone to Murray's in the day, or the Mickey Finn's Warehouse, Ross Street goes into the property and then angles into the property. Uh, so, once we, uh, have a contract, and we've purchased the property, uh, the city has also indicated to me that they will also be conveying that piece of land to us so we can incorporate it into the project without having it remain, because it doesn't go anywhere, just dead-ends into the property.
Okay, we have questions in regards to the match from, from Mr. Gavlick.
No questions about the match. Did you say that you service all areas of Luzern County? If so, does that mean that you and Hazleton are duplicating services?
We don't have any duplication of services at the moment, Mr. Carriler, but, uh, and we won't have duplication. My, my remarks were regarding the fact that we have authorization, 'cause we are a Luzern County entity, therefore, we can run down there, uh, if we so choose, but we haven't done that, because they have their own services. Uh, what we are in the process of doing, however, is, uh, we've proposed two, uh, Hazleton routes, one early in the morning and one in the afternoon. We've been working on this for a few years now with Luzern County Community College. We now have, because of the development in the Hanover Industrial Park and in the Humboldt Industrial Park, and because of the economy and the job and labor market the way it is, um, over the course of the few years now, we originally talked to LCC about it, uh, probably three years ago, uh, about getting a Hazleton route started in order for students from the Hazleton area to be able to get to the LCC campus in Nanticoe to attend classes there during the week, because they have a campus in downtown Hazleton, uh, but many of those students don't have a way to get to the main campus in order to finish their degrees, or for other activities and purposes that they need to get to the campus. So, we originally worked with Hazleton Public Transit to try and, uh, come up with a solution. Uh, they have two trips a day now that come down to the city of Wilkes-Barre. However, the problem is, the one trip in the morning doesn't get to our intermodal till nine-thirty in the morning, and the other one leaves to go back to Hazleton at two-thirty in the afternoon. So, there's not much of a window there for anyone to be able to get anything done or go to work. So, what we've done is, we've been working on a public-private partnership now over the last, uh, year and a half with the, with the development, uh, and I gotta say that North Point is also a supporter of this. They're working with us on this. Uh, the employers are realizing they have to start reaching out in a larger radius in order to get, and attract employees. So, we, we had, um, Kevin O'Donnell from Can Do and Humboldt Business Association come to us, and I mean, LCTA, myself, uh, included, to come down to Hazleton uh, and speak to the Can Do Association, the Humboldt Association, about the projects we're working on up in Center Point with Miracle, which is a public-private partnership. Uh, for those who may know, we're, we're putting a transfer bus station on Route three fifteen, right outside of the Center Point. Uh, we've been working with that, uh, with, uh, the Miracle Group on that now for about a year and a half. And that is being completely set, we, we work together, our grant writers work together, our teams work together. The, we applied for a DCED grant, and the Miracle Company is putting up all the matching funds, they're providing all the engineering, all the, uh, construction, they'll do all the installation, and they're providing the land. Uh, I believe it's an acre, maybe two, uh, for the whole project. So, uh, and, and that will enable us and Colts, uh, to then realign all of our routes between the two cities and go into a transfer station at Center Point, and then allow us better, uh, ability to schedule routes and frequencies going into the Center Point Industrial Parks. Well, they heard about that down in Hazleton and, and Kevin O'Donnell. Uh, we go to a lot of same meetings, and he asked us to come down to Hazleton to a meeting down there last year to talk to the Hazleton Employers, the Business Association, and Can Do, to talk about that project, 'cause he would like to try and get something like that started down in Hazleton. So, we did that. And in the meantime, we're, we're proposing, uh, the, 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 the whole tie-in is, we're proposing two routes, one early in the morning, one in the afternoon. That'll be express routes that will run from Intermodal Wilkes-Barre, will go through the Hanover Industrial Park, the LCC campus. It will get to downtown Hazleton's Intermodal by about six-ten in the morning, ten minutes before the Ha- the Hum- the Hazleton Public Transit bus leaves Hazleton City to go into Humboldt, to take people into work. So, what that'll do in the morning is, and enable people from down here, every, the companies from up there to recruit from down here, opening up the, the realm of jobs for more folks in the county access to those jobs. What happens then is, when the bus comes back, we run it up and down eighty-one, so we can make the trip faster, 'cause it's an express route. It'll allow students from the Hazleton area to come down to the LCC campus. It will also allow anybody up there who wants to work down here to get to the Hanover Industrial Park, to get back to the Hanover Industrial Park by seven-thirty in the morning for first shift job, get to the LCC campus by seven-thirty-five in the morning, to be able to attend classes by eight o'clock, and then back to this, the downtown square in, in Wilkes-Barre by eight AM in the morning. So, anyone that wants to get to the square, work downtown, uh, come down and, uh, do business in downtown Wilkes-Barre, or ki- or needs to get connecting buses to go to Scranton, or wants to go to Casino all day, they, they'll be able to spend the entire day, uh, down here in the city and vice versa. The bus going back in the afternoon, our bus will leave downtown Wilkes-Barre at about three-thirty, three-thirty-four-five in the afternoon, and reverses over to Hanover Industrial Park, LCT, C, Campus, and be back in downtown Hazleton, uh, to get those folks back home, and be back in Wilkes-Barre by six PM. That'll run Monday through Friday. We already have three partners signed up to support that financially. We've asked, uh, a group of people that we've had in meetings, and we'll be following a follow-up meeting in the coming weeks. Uh, we've costed out what it, what it's gonna cost us to run those two trips, Monday through Friday to Hazleton. It's in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, our goal would be to get it running and get it up to usage to the, to our PennDOT, uh, Act forty-four metric level, which is seventeen passages per revenue hour. We've asked for a one-year commitment from those partners to finance it, uh, after which time, or if we hit that metric in the, before that time, we would stop taking their money. Um, and what we'll do then is, in exchange for their financial commitment, they will get bus passes from us that they can use for recruiting in their companies, to hire, uh, employees, and give them bus passes so they can get to work. We will also give them an advertising package in our system inventory of sign-ins on our buses, internal sign-ins, websites, uh, schedules, uh, which, the value of which will be probably more than what they're gonna be giving us to finance to get this route started. So, it's, it's another example of what we're trying to do to increase, expand services, and do things, uh, and, and engage... things and engage and bring in private companies to help pay for these services that they take, that they benefit from, but in many cases weren't necessarily sponsoring or paying for upfront. And quite frankly, we've had a very good response and reaction to that. There's also, there's a couple more we're working on longer term, but the answer you're addressing, Mr. Kellner, we do not have duplication of services. Even those two trips we are creating won't duplicate what they're doing. They come up and down 309, it takes an hour and a half one way for their trip, and there's not enough time during the day for them. Our trips are going to run up 81, the express routes, be there earlier and later in the day, and specifically set up for people to get to work in LCC. And it'll be an open public route, anyone can use it, so we'll benefit from whatever ridership we get on those buses, paying the fares and buying additional passes. But that's part of, that's basically the second phase of what we've turned internally at LCTA is our connect, what we call the Connect the Corridor Initiative that we started about a year and a half ago with COLTS. We worked with COLTS, if some of you remember what we did there in working with Bob Fume and the group up. We aligned all of our passes, our pricing, our fares to be the same, and then we also programmed our fare boxes to be the same. So now, anyone that buys a pass from COLTS or LCTA can use that pass interchangeably in both systems without having to get transfers necessary. So if you have a one-day pass or a 31-day pass, you can travel between Luzerne and Lackawanna County right now seamlessly without any issue, just put the card in the fare box, it works in both. We're working on getting to that point with Hazleton Public Transit. However, they don't have fare boxes in their buses up there, they have cash boxes. So we've met with, I've met with the mayor of Hazleton and with Congressman Parker.
Mr. Gavlick, can we talk about the match?
Sure.
You can come back some other night and give us your narrative.
I was simply trying to answer that question.
I think the answer is.
But I'm more than happy to, sure.
So does anybody have questions for Mr. Gavlick in regards to the match?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the match. You're Luzerne County Transportation Authority, your authority was authorized by the commissioners initially, and you come to us every year and you give a good explanation of why you need the money, and I don't have a problem with that. I just have one question about your proposal at Murray Complex. Does that include the old brick pile and the building that's still standing?
Everything, from, everything from Hazel Street to the bridge and from Penn App to the tracks, except for the piece where that existing building is.
Now, one follow-up on that. You know, they're bringing up the topic of, you know, rail service again from New York into the area. Are you considering a train mixed in multimodal transportation network there with the bus?
Well, we've talked about that a lot, and that railroad tracks there are owned by the redevelopment authority.
Right, right.
I've talked to Andy Riley and he's discussed with his board. They've also indicated they would convey that to us once we own the property.
Well, after he pays the county the million or so dollars that he still owes us, then maybe he can convey it to you.
Okay.
He still owes us some money on that one.
But we have, we've proposed another idea for the set of tracks between the Murray Complex and Lackawanna Station in downtown, in the COLTS station in downtown Scranton, which involve buses, which we think is a much better idea.
Yeah, I think Solomon still uses that train though, too, going down by Shields Market there. I see him, I think he's the last user since Air Products, I don't believe he's using it anymore, but Solomon still uses it periodically.
Yeah, the Scranton to New Jersey line is still in the works, and you know, Dave knows from on the MPO committee, that's still being worked, there was just more grant money funded for that. We have some other ideas of how we can connect the two cities together using that line.
Right, right. Anybody about the match? Again, it's been budgeted in our budget, so it is available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, this is not an app, but I do have, I want to go back to that idea, the RFP thing.
Voting machine?
Yeah, no, not the voting machine. The lobbyists and the discussion about whether there was an RFP. So in the charter, Section 609D says competitive bidding shall not be required for professional services. However, if you go down about eight lines in it, there shall be procedures for seeking requests for proposals for professional services costing in excess of the minimum level required for competitive bidding, which the minimum level is 25,000. I think that needed to have an RFP.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, it's in the charter.
Yeah.
Section 609D.
I think you cited that, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we have Mr. Gavlick come at a future date to talk more about operations?
Yeah, a future date.
Because I appreciate Mr. Seflow and Mr. Patton for coming out, the members of the board. I found it alarming that, given a lot of success at LCTA, the board recently authorized a nationwide search to replace Mr. Gavlick. And it seems like there's, you know, when Mr. Williams and I were here too, we had questions about that old contract that they gave out to their audit, which was a very high bid. And now I see a nationwide search and it, something doesn't pass the smell test. It's kind of like the old days where some members used to just throw rocks at Mr. Pedger and Mr. Allon just because, and hats off to you, Mr. Gavlick, because I think you're doing an incredible job there. And I would like to hear more about the success at LCTA, given the scandal of the ghost rider. I'd like to see us be beyond reproach. And I've been a friend to Salka many times, especially you initiated that ridership up there. The bus is packed, it's great. So Mr. Schnee's talking about, you know, the lunch pail, folks, you're meeting the needs there, you and the staff at LCTL, the drivers, we appreciate them. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Yes.
Commented last meeting on the newest member, Mr. Seflow, and his resume, while you're here, I'll talk about you. I talked about you last meeting, but your resume is, your resume is impeccable, but I just wanted to share with the people what kind of talent that there is in Luzerne County, and somebody like you putting your name up and willing to. So, that's him, and thank you for your.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I do read some of the stuff in the paper.
Just don't hang around that guy next to you.
That's why I wanted to come over today.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a public comment today?
I don't know, Mr. Schnee, should we have public comment?
I think quiet is the most.
Yes, you have. So you have.
I'm busting at the seams.
Well, go for it, Mr. Schiner, go for it.
Is he going to accumulate this three minutes for about 80 minutes?
Well, I'd like to echo what Mr. Haas said, too. Norm Gavlick, talk about a man who knows and is devoted to his job. Too bad his board doesn't seem that way. I do, and I think most of the bus riders in this county do. He's done a great job as far as I'm concerned, and he's brought it a long ways from what it was just about five years ago, I think. I know it was removed from your agenda tonight, but who is T.O.S. LLC that's requesting an abatement in taxes? When you go to the corporate page for them, there are no names. It's also reported that they may be linked to a company that owes $64,857 in back taxes. So I'm sure this will be coming back on your agenda at some point, and I hope you'll have that information at that point. With the election machine RFP, yet another unfunded mandate, stormwater, voting machines, it just doesn't stop. I really don't think they're going to tell us we can't vote if we don't get new machines. Really don't. I don't think it's going to happen. And we don't really have millions of dollars extra right now and don't really think we should borrow 4 million or more for machines. But on this RFP, I was distressed to see that the companies that had strictly paper ballots are being, are not being included in this. Only the companies that have touchscreen.
No, the papers are also being included.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because that's not what it was reported?
No, the paper ballots are also being.
So we will get to know what's a strict paper ballot?
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you. The Mavericks. The idea of hiring a lobbyist firm to help the county just hits me on all levels. First of all, as far as I know, we have a grant writer in this county. She's paid $68,730 a year between salary and benefits. Are we going to eliminate her? Or is this going to be in addition to what we pay her? So that'll be an extra $60,000 a year on top of, just for this grant writing and so on. In my opinion, my definition of the lobbyist is legalized bribery. It's what they do. They push their way, they twist, they take, they give the gifts, everything everyone wants stopped in our government, they do. So why would we want to hire a firm that does this? Contributions to candidates and political spending on their behalf from lobbyists present a special risk of corruption. Any of you remember reading that? Because it's your resolution from 2017, Resolution Number 42, it's right in there. But you're going to consider hiring a lobbyist firm. Think you need to reconsider that one also. And lastly, I live in Kingston. I live on the west side, many of you do. And we're protected from flooding by a levee system. That levee system is maintained by the Flood Protection Authority. Are you, as council, aware of the fact that we do not have an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the Flood Protection Authority? And if you want to count the one that's been there since 2011, I wouldn't, because, boy, it's going to cost us a bundle. Needs to be done. We need to have that agreement in place. The levee system is what protects our homes. I'm not thrilled with paying a levee fee. I was much happier when the county paid that, and the burden was on all the taxpayers, just like we all pay for the roads and the bridges in this county. But that's not what it is. So as far as I'm concerned, the money I pay in my levee fee every year is well worth it, and the biggest insurance to maintain the fact that I don't get flooded, way more so than the insurance company that's going to give me the money after the fact because I'm just going to get in a rowboat and go. I know that'll make everyone happy, but I'll find a way back.
Only if the boat leaves.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
So move. Great. Thank you.